Good morning. I will call to order the February 29, 2024, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board, Tony Mayernick; County Council, Stephen Madcor; Commissioner West is out of the office on military leave. Roll call: Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will provide you with the opportunity to do that. There are blue cards available at the table, and just insert one in the basket, and we will watch it throughout the meeting. General public comment will be taken at the usual time, which is at the end of our ordinary business. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. I will turn the gavel over to Vice Chair Commissioner Schrader at 11:30, because I am attending a meeting that's been scheduled for over two months, and I need to get out of here, and so I can arrive there on time. We will welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board.
You are now meeting as a Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board of Directors. Joining you online is Housing Resident Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Wait one moment for Commissioner Leenstra. Commissioner Leenstra, are you there?
Good morning.
Good morning. This is Request for Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda: One item, approval of a resolution to appoint Resident Commissioner Anne Leenstra to a new four-year term, no fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved.
Does there any Commissioner who would like to remove anything from this particular consent agenda? Seeing none, Anne Leenstra, I will entertain a motion.
If it's appropriate. I move we approve the consent agenda for the Housing Authority.
Second.
Commissioner Anne Leenstra has moved we approve the consent agenda for the Housing Authority, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and convene as the Clackamas County Service District Number Five Board of Directors. Gary, would you introduce this item, please?
Yes, thank you. Chair, this is a public hearing for Service District Number Five, Street Lighting District, Item One, Approval of a Board Order Forming New Assessment Areas Within Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Current value of the addition of 15 assessment areas is estimated at $9,577.60 annually. Funding is through ratepayers of the district. No county general funds are involved. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, and Wendy Coriell, Street Lighting Coordinator. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. Chair Smith, Commissioners, I'm going to beat you to the joke, Commissioner. It's a very enlightening topic we have today. We don't come in front of you often, but when we do, basically regarding street lighting, it's basically mostly regarding the assessment districts that need to be established when these various developments, which are required to provide street lighting, look to come into the assessment area to pay the power bills associated with that. I'm joined by Wendy today, who's going to run you through the specifics. We're trying to streamline these as much as possible, so we've consolidated a lot of this. These used to be individual requests. Pretty lengthy one here attached. All of these are associated, like I said, with development, which has occurred throughout the county. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wendy to provide more information.
Yes, good morning. I'm Wendy Coriell, and I'm representing Clackamas County Service District Number Five, which is the agency responsible for street lighting in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County and also for the city of Happy Valley. Street lighting is required as conditions of approval for all new industrial, residential, commercial, and multifamily developments within the urban area of Clackamas County and the city of Happy Valley. Today, we have 15 areas for your consideration. 11 are in the unincorporated area of Clackamas County, and four are in the city of Happy Valley. The areas for your consideration, long list, is Area 0716. This is an office building on Sunnyside Road in Happy Valley. Area 0518, which is a warehouse office building on 172nd Avenue in Happy Valley. Area 3419, which is a 130-unit senior living facility, and this is also on 172nd Avenue in Happy Valley. Area 3519, which is a Penske Trucking Office Edition on 130th Avenue in Clackamas County. 4319, which is a three-story self-storage building on Otting Road, and this is in Clackamas County. 02-20, there are four commercial office buildings on 135th Avenue in Clackamas County. 0720, which is Johnson Creek Townhomes. This is also on Johnson Creek and in Clackamas County. 0320 is Precision Fiber Warehouse and Office Building. This is on 94th Avenue in Clackamas County. 0921, which is the North Clackamas School District Transportation Facility on 102nd Avenue in Clackamas County. 16-21 is Cobalt Apartments on Park Lane Avenue. This is in Happy Valley. 3121, which is the 224 Logistics Building Addition and Modification in Clackamas County. 32-21, a new building for a pool business on Southeast Lake Road, and that's in Clackamas County. 13-22, an industrial training facility on Evelyn Street in Clackamas County. 07-23, a senior care facility on Johnson Creek, and that's in Clackamas County. And then 16-23, a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Office and Library, and that's also in Clackamas County. All of these areas come under Rate D, and that's at $116 per linear frontage foot per tax lot each year. These areas will have Cobra roadway-style lighting. Just as a note, something that changed, PGE changed their description of Cobra-style lighting, so we're adding the word roadway in front of it, so that's new. They will be installed on either existing wood poles, or we'll have new installations of fiberglass poles. Prior to scheduling this hearing today, the Streetlight District notified the property owners for each area in writing of the public meeting to answer any questions and review the next steps in the process. There were no remonstrances received for these areas, and that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Wendy. So this is a street lighting district that has been very successful in Clackamas County. In fact, past people who have volunteered to pay in it are so thankful that their streets are not dark at night, especially in the winter. And so this particular group of entities that have come forward to be in the district have asked to be on it, correct?
That is correct.
It's volunteer-only. Thank you. Commissioner Scholl?
Well, I always enjoy seeing you here and hearing about what you're doing with the Service District Number Five. I remember a couple of years ago, when you came in and talked to us about the rates going down. I just love to hear that, and I want to thank you for doing all this so efficiently. It's much appreciated. Thank you. And also pass along to the board members of Service District Number Five, thank you for their work.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
I always find things with District Five would be rather illuminating and brightens our day. My question is, almost kind of building off of what Commissioner Scholl stated about the rates going down, do we have, is that going to be recalibrated, a result of PGE's rates going up for everyone? Do we know what those impacts are?
So as a part of our budget process on an annual basis, we assess what our current revenues are, expenses are, and what the rate is. And we try not to make, we look at adjustments that are in response to rate increases and try not to be overreactive. I would assume there may be some cost increase associated with that. I don't foresee a significant increase in the rate this particular year. If you recall, some time ago, we got surprised, for lack of a better word, I want to say five or six years ago, and it was inadvertent, and we had a pretty significant cost increase from PGE, which resulted in some rate increases for the district. And at that time, we became more proactive in doing five-year forecasts and revenue projections for the district, and look at micro-adjustments versus macro-adjustments. And I would expect that'll be similar this year.
Okay. Well, yeah, as long as that's being calibrated in the budget, well, budget's around the corner, so I'll be looking at that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from Commissioners? I don't see any. I will now open the meeting for public testimony on this particular lighting district only. And I will take in-person testimony first on the addition of District Number Five, the lighting district only. We don't see anybody in the room who would like to testify on this. Tony, is there anyone online who would like to testify on the lighting district?
If you would like to testify on Service District Number Five, the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing on this, ask if there's any further discussion. If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Board Order Forming New Assessment Areas Within the Clackamas County Service District Number Five.
Second, Commissioner Scholl has moved we approve the Board Order Forming New Assessment Areas Within Clackamas County Service District Five. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Director.
Apologies, you're a correct chair. Commissioner Schrader. I apologize. Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0, just for the public's enjoyment in this. Sometimes we're directors and sometimes we're Commissioners, and our hats change often. And sometimes we just forget. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the Service District Number Five Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is a public hearing. Item One, First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 5.01, Animal Licensing Services and Enforcement. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, and Mike Besner, Assistant Director of Transportation and Development, will present. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Transportation Development, street lighting, dogs, and everything else. We are here, thank you so much. We have shared with you a beloved program within our department, is our dog services program. We have discussed some amendments to Chapter Five of the county code. Basically, these proposed amendments, staff has worked in concert with County Council to review and propose those amendments before you today. These essentially contain rules associated with governing, dog licensing, and enforcement. They fall into a number of categories. One, they're either housekeeping, updating these to current standards, to be consistent with current codes, state requirements, et cetera. They are also recommendations we receive from our hearings officer during our hearing proceedings, and then recommendations from staff and/or consistency with state law. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Besner, who's going to run through the proposal for you today, and will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Dan. Good morning. So I'll just run through a few of the highlights here in what this code amendment would do. First, it would remove all language relative to the licensing of animal rescue entities. The reason is, state legislature made that a county requirement a few years ago. The law has since changed. It is now a state responsibility. We don't do it, so we're just removing all that language from the code. It'll clarify the definition of a secure enclosure in reference to when the hearings officer designates a dog as dangerous. Specifically, it allows the hearings officer to exclude the interior of a home as a secure enclosure. That might sound strange, but as an example, there was a situation where a home healthcare worker was going to come in a house, and so for very specific examples, it's good to give the hearings officer that flexibility. It clarifies the definition of violation to account for continuous violations, and so make it easier for us to enforce some violations that really, something like a failure to surrender a dog that's been ordered to be surrendered by the hearings officer, that could be a continuous violation, which gives us more ability to enforce it. It'll change our dog licensing requirement. Currently, you have to have a rabies vaccination certificate that is valid for the entire duration of the dog license. It'll change it so that the day you get the dog license, you need to have a current rabies certificate, which means that the certificate could expire before the license does and will still issue you a dog license. Currently, we miss out on some people where their rabies might expire eight months into the term, and we can't sell them the license. And so it's kind of a lose-lose there. It still requires them to maintain it through the entire duration of the license period. They simply have to renew it. If they fail to, the license will become void. It'll exempt dogs used in law enforcement from paying for a license. They still need a rabies certificate. They still need to get a license. We're just not going to charge them in recognition of their role in serving the public. And state statute does define what a law enforcement dog is, so it's not like just anybody can come and declare this exemption. Currently, we have a pretty long list of violations that require a mandatory appearance before the hearings officer, so when we issue a citation, that goes to a hearings officer, who's basically the judge in the matter. Serious violations will still require a mandatory appearance, but there's some that just aren't as serious. We still hold a hearing, I want to be clear on that, but it's just not mandatory for the person to appear. It clarifies that dog control officers will be able to present legal arguments in front of the hearings officer. Right now, it's not real clear. This was recommended by county councils, so that we don't need county council to be there for every single hearing. It gives the hearings officer the ability to issue amended decisions to correct errors or omissions that don't materially alter his decision, his or her decision, but rather it gives parties better understanding on how to comply with an order. Once a hearings officer has already made a ruling and ordered a dog to be euthanized, if somebody is to appeal that ruling, whether it's to a writ or appeal to a judge, this will require them to pay upkeep fees upfront. This will avoid frivolous appeals. This has happened in the past, where months and months end up going by, and we didn't have the ability to do this before. But I want to be clear, it's after a hearings officer has already ruled. And it clarifies that the cost of an impoundment can be a fee imposed by the hearings officer when they do rule on a violation. So that is the summary of the main changes we're looking for.
So we're here today for this first reading. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have, and we have, within the recommendation before you, is basically a request to advance to the second reading at a future date, date March 14, 2024, at 10:00 a.m.
Do Commissioners have any questions regarding this? Seeing none, I will now open the meeting for public testimony on the dog licensing aspect only. I will take in-person testimony first regarding this particular public hearing regarding dog licensures. Seeing no one, Tony, is there anyone online?
If you would like to testify on the ordinance regarding dog services, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Well, thank you. I will now close the public portion, the public communication portion of this hearing. Ask Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second, Commissioner Scholl has moved that we read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Yes.
Chair Smith, I just want to, I'm always impressed by these gentlemen, all they do, and they do Department of Transportation and Development, planning, highways, roads, construction, permitting, and you take time out to be concerned about our best friends, our dogs, and safety. Much appreciated. Thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge the amazing dog services staff in the back that provide amazing service to our community and our citizens as well.
Yep, thank you very much for coming today. Any other discussion on this? Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0. Would the clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
The ordinance will be numbered 01-2024, an Ordinance Amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 5.01, Animal Licensing Services and Enforcement.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Seeing none, the second reading will be Thursday, March 14, 2024, at the Board's regular scheduled business meeting at 6:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Clackamas County Consent Agenda: Elected Officials. Item One, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Transportation and Development. Item One, Approval of a Resolution Declaring the Public Necessity and Purpose for Acquisition of Right-Away Insements and Authorizing Good Faith Negotiations and Condemnation Actions for the Henry Creek Arley Mitchell Road Culvert Replacement Project. Total project value is $1,018,460. Funding is through the City of Portland, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Forest Service, Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, and $99,756 in county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services. Item One, Approval of a Revenue Pharmacy Services Agreement with Albertson's Companies Incorporated for Disbursement of 340B Drug Discount Program Drugs. Estimated value is $180,000 per year until mutually terminated. Funding is through Albertson's Companies Incorporated. No county general funds are involved. Item Two, Approval of a Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Health Centers Driving Under the Influence of Intoxicant Services. Agreement value is $7,616.27 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item Three, Approval of Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon for Dental Program Payment Incentives. Anticipated agreement value is $300,000 for one year. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item Four, Approval to Apply for a Continuation Grant for AmeriCorps Senior Companion Program Funds. The anticipated value is $139,025 for one year. Funding through the AmeriCorps Senior Companion Program with $13,902 from matching funds and statewide transportation improvement funds. No county general funds are involved. Item Five, Approval of Amendment Number One, Extending the Duration and Changing Language of a Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Environmental Health Services Program. Amendment value is $7,198,575 over six years. Agreement value is increased to $9,598,100 over eight years. Funding through licensing fees. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything off this particular consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
This is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item, Approval of a Quick Claim Due to the Highland Summit Owners Association to Convey Interest in Property. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any Director wish to remove any item from this consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Schrader has moved we approve the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, and Director Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0. Thank you very much, Directors. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of Board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take, a series of blue cards here, I will take them in order as received. I see there's a lot of folks in the room today, and I want to thank you for coming before us and voicing your opinions, but there's some things that I think need to be set for the record. NCPRD is responding to a letter from October, where the school district expressed interest in purchasing the building. Conversations with the school district are active and ongoing, and no meetings have been canceled by either party. Property transactions require us, the Board of Directors and Commissioners, to maintain confidentiality during the negotiation process, and that's allowed for under law. No final decisions have been made, and there will be additional opportunities for you to provide input before any decision. I have some blue cards first that I'm going to call on. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, just want to just maybe help also kind of just add some cadence to how this came about. And I'm responding to a series of emails which had some similar language, and I'm going to read one of the paragraphs that stuck out to me. "I ask that the county commissioners be transparent with the public on what brought them to this decision and what they hope to see as the outcomes of the service center and the surrounding property. I also ask that conversations be in earnest with the North Clackamas School District," so on, so forth. So this has been explained, but I'll take this opportunity to actually add a little bit more detail to it. So on May 22, in this room, was the Budget Committee for NCPRD, and in that committee, in that meeting, to our surprise, the Board of Directors' surprise, what was revealed to us by the Director and staff was that the Wichita School needed a roof, and it was several hundred thousand dollars. And that was a surprise to us, and I had concerns, because I had been in the building, Wichita School, at the first opening of the Wichita Center for the services being rendered, so back in 2010 or '11. So I knew the condition of the building somewhat as a walkthrough, and been there several times since then, actually. So with that in mind, after the Budget Committee meeting was adjourned, members of the Budget Committee approached me with concerns about it. They hadn't heard about it either. They were surprised and concerned about the financial condition of the district with regard to being able to pay for that. My concern was deeper as well, similar but deeper into the other aspects of the building. into the other aspects of the building as well. So, following that meeting, I started doing research, my staff, asking questions, finding out what the costs were, how we were doing on the agreement with the school district as it relates to transitioning the property. Was there any progress being made? What is the condition of the building? Did our staff do any work on the feasibility or an assessment? And I was disappointed to learn that, no, there was no assessment of the building. There was no, there was no work being done that would say, geez, if we do this roof, what other problems are there with the building? Was this something that was going to grow? Because again, the financial condition of the district is such that we're not in good shape. We've been in the red from, with basically operating expenses outpacing revenues for a long time. So, that led to that research. Though it's not complete, I'm still working on that, but I did learn a lot. That, but what I did learn, the board discussed an executive session about doing an assessment because of our concerns that we had gleaned from the property. And so, on September 6th, '23, approximately right around that time, we initiated a building assessment of the school. And from that building assessment, obviously, I think Wichita staff over there realized that we were doing the assessment and that probably led to a letter, can't speculate, but I'm just guessing that that led to the letter we received on October 16th about, in an email from the school district, expressing interest in acquiring the building, expressing interest in the concerns about the condition of the building, similar to our concerns. So, I thought, hey, great, great point. So, the assessment's underway on November 2nd. Just following that, you know, between that period of time, the board met executive session and responded. Our staff sent a letter signed by the administrator saying, sure, we're willing to do that. Positive. And so, we received the assessment, I believe, where are my notes here? I believe we received the assessment somewhere after November, December. Yeah, December, I believe. Oh, yes, yeah, the assessment was complete on November 22nd. On November, pardon me, get my stuff, my notes here in order. So, yeah, the assessment was complete in November. There was another meeting between the administrator and the school superintendent, I believe, on January 3rd, as I understand it. Again, positive communication is continuing to work. In that interim, we got the assessment in November '22 and we looked at the transition agreement. It's not a lease, it's a transition agreement and had our concerns about the building and so forth. But the fact that we were moving forward with the school district, we sent a termination of the transition agreement. The leases, the leases, the leases for the services being rendered are, were not terminated. So, there's a confusion. People think that we terminated a lease. We didn't terminate a lease. We terminated the transition agreement. So, the leases for the services we render there were not terminated. The other misunderstanding out there is that we lease the property. Well, we don't lease the property. Actually, the school district leases the property for those services rendered. The Parks District receives zero rent. The rents are received, kept, utilized by the school district. The property is owned by the Parks District, not the county. So, there's those technicalities. So, I just wanted to express that not only are we working in good faith, there's been no change of working in good faith. We have been communicating. We waited for the assessment. Then after the assessment was complete, after the termination was sent, we did our due diligence in getting an appraisal. So, there was a quiet period of waiting for the appraisal and the appraisal just came available here recently. So, all that said, I just want to just say that as responsible members of the Parks District Board in this capacity wearing that hat, we are doing our responsible due diligence to make sure that the health, welfare of the people in the building is in good shape. Kids, Head Start's in there, a number of things, as well as, as well as the fiscal aspects of the building. The fact that the school district expressed interest in the letter was a positive for us and we just hope to help it continue. So, there's been no pause, there's been no change of heart, there's been no change of intent. We have been very openly, but of course, property negotiations are in executive session, but we've been working cooperatively with the school district. We hope that's in good faith and remains in good faith. So, with that, Chair, I'll just yield back to the floor.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas? I have some blue cards. I'll call up the cards. Commissioners, if you need to comment, just please click on your light for me so I can keep track. Thank you. Up first is Ed Villa. Is it Villa or Villa? Villa, come on up, sir. Welcome. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Edward Villa. I live, like, you actually want the address?
No, just area is fine.
Happy Valley, 122nd and Sunnyside, right by the Safeway.
Yeah.
I got three minutes?
You have three minutes.
Perfect. So, I, thank you. I appreciate Paul and Tudy Smith for the background and how we got here. I wanted to just say that Wichita Center is one of the most important buildings that we have in the North Clackamas School District. I myself, I am an employee of the North Clackamas School District. I'm actually here as a single father. And what I wanted to just let everybody know is that the communication hasn't been, at least to us, it's been limited. And from what we read in the newspapers, it's not so forthcoming that there is dialogue going on between the North Clackamas Parks and Recs and the North Clackamas School District. I may be wrong, but what I do know, what I do know is that a lot of the kids in Milwaukee actually utilize this center. This has been a place where they get their nutrients, they get their hygiene products. This place here means a lot to the community and as a, as a school district, what we do is that we call on the community to please bring good so that we can give it out and provide services for students that need it. A lot of students at Rao Middle School, even Milwaukee High School, a lot of their shoes actually come from this, from this place just this week. I was told, one of the students in the after-school program was telling me that they got brand-new shoes and they were actually female shoes, but he's a boy. He liked the shoes, but he just saw that there was a name tag behind it. It was a brand-new shoe and it meant the world to him. He uses his sweater, he wears the same sweater every single day and he has a couple of them and we have more to give him, but this is what he, this is the look that he wants. This is what he wants. When people look at him, they're like, yes, you know, this Davenport actually dresses like this. This place means a lot to a lot of people. It's, we have a lot of people coming from Latin America, coming over here to come to live in the United States here in our area and this is the first place they go to. They have, we have somebody that does the McKenney Vento, which is the homeless liaisons. They provide housing services or if they can't pay their rent, they usually support them there. They gave them food, boxes of food. It's just a wonderful community. When we're, when we talk about it, we talk about the numbers. We talked about, you know, what's going on with the building, numbers about, that is sustainable. But when we're talking about the families, they see this, they don't see the numbers. What they see is, this is the one place in Clackamas County, at least, that is accessible to them by the train, by the car, and that they can get the service that they need in order for them to be able to be successful here in our schools. And this is new residents as long as people that have been living here their entire lives. That's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, and if I mispronounced your name, just come up and correct me and I probably will, okay? So, up next is Brennan Wildermath. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Brennan. I am a resident of Clackamas, a former North Clackamas School District student and one of the current leaders of the Southeast Portland Youth Collective, which has many students who attend North Clackamas Schools. I want to start off by saying that I am very pleased to hear that discussions have begun with North Clackamas School District surrounding the sale of the Wichita Center back to the district. It is a step in the right direction in a situation that has been confusing, frustrating, and also disappointing. I'm sure that you are all aware of the statistics. During the 22-23 school year, the Wichita Center served 7,396 households, 12,952 children ages 5 through 17, and 2,433 children ages 0 through 4. That nearly 39% of North Clackamas families are considered low-income and 26% of students are currently on free or reduced-priced lunch. Both of those numbers coming from the Oregon Department of Education, as well as the fact that there are roughly 300 students that are currently houseless in the district. And those numbers speak loudly for themselves. But as I sat around a table with my fellow leaders and some of our students this past Sunday to discuss this issue, I was moved not only by their passion for ensuring that these services remain at their current home, but also by the stories that some of them shared around the services that Wichita Center and the ways that the Wichita Center impacted their lives. And at least one of those stories is present here today and will be shared by another one of my colleagues. But I do want to share one of the things that a student said after we spent time sharing stories, which was, "I never knew how I felt. I never knew how much I cared. I guess it did impact our lives a lot." And while this is just one group of students, I believe that these numbers would suggest that there are students that have similar stories. The Wichita Center is not just a building that houses many essential services for some of our most vulnerable neighbors. It is a place that is weaved into the fabric of the stories of many in our beloved and sacred community. My hope is that a functional and effective local government wouldn't allow a decision that would not only cause these services that help our vulnerable neighbors to become houseless themselves, but would also take away a place that, whether consciously or not, is a heartbeat in the community. So, I'm here today urging for, at minimum, the sale of the Wichita Center back to the North Clackamas School District for an affordable price. One that takes into account the estimated cost of repairs that the building needs, that the district would likely have to cover before any of these services would be interrupted at the end of June. The kids cannot wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Dez Valdez, or Valdez?
Valdez.
Same, Dez Valdez. Thank you very much. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dez Valdez. I work with youth in Clackamas County through the Southeast Youth Collective. Like Brennan said, many of the youth that we work with have used these services. Their families rely on these services. And they were startled to learn that the Wichita Center had been issued an eviction notice. They told their stories and rather than trying to just relay them in my own words, I want to bring the testimony of one of our high school students, Vanessa, with me today. Vanessa writes, "Hello, I am a junior at Milwaukee High School, writing about an issue that is happening in the Milwaukee community. The Wichita Community Center could be shut down and it's something essential that is very accessible for many families in need. They offer around 13 services there, such as a food pantry, clothes, shoes, maternity resources, and a Ready, Set, Go program. The Ready, Set, Go program has completely changed my life. Most of my classmates were Hispanic kids, so they can relate to what I'm going to say. I entered my first day of Head Start as a daughter of an immigrant mother and father who work hard to get where I am today. I had no idea what was happening or what anyone else was saying because I didn't speak nor understand any English, so I was pretty quiet because I didn't know English. But the teachers ended up teaching me how to speak English and I was able to feel comfortable and confident about myself. It gave me a sense that I felt part of a community and felt empowered from that day on. It's made me the person I am today. So, please, I ask you to raise awareness and to sell the building to the school district for an affordable price so families like mine can continue to use these services." Vanessa is just one of many students who have similar stories that connect to the Wichita Center. Just one of students that we work with, but also just one of many, many students in the county. So, I implore you to consider the importance of these services, their need to remain accessible and together. As you work through this, this purchasing decision, I ask you to sell to the district for an affordable price. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas.
I just, I will just tell you that I've, as a member of this community, a member of the, I live in the school district, I pay school district taxes, park district taxes. I live in this community. So, anyone who walks through the Wichita Center on the inside will know what the value of those services are and how important they are to people. We get it. I get it. I'm almost, I walk out of there heartbroken practically, just realizing that people are, you know, kind of suffering and, and I just wish they were in a better place than they are today, but we're not. Poverty is poverty, unfortunately, and hopefully we can work our way out of that. But I just want to say one thing, that one thing that's come to mind and I expressed it last Thursday at this business meeting, is a number of people that I know in the community that are upset because of the misunderstanding that they've gleaned from the information that's been out there, whether it's been in the news articles or whether it's been from this, this email effort, whatnot. There has been no eviction notice. None. If anyone has a copy and eviction notice, please send it to me. Or we're not aware of any eviction notice. It was very clear that the letter from the school district and the communication with the school district is that they wanted to keep Wichita Center and keep the services there as opposed to transitioning the property to Parks. We never got the keys to the building. That transition agreement was in question. There's been no transitioning. There was no effort to transition out or relocate the services by the school district. We respect the fact that they want to keep it, that there's been a change of heart, a change of mind. If they want to keep the building, clearly, the board has expressed and has documentation that we're amenable to that and the sale's there. So, I just hope everyone has their facts straight, but there's been no eviction. It's been a termination of the transition agreement. The leases have not been terminated for services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Ed Wagner. State your name, your area of residence, sir, and you have three minutes.
Good morning and thank you. My name's Ed Wagner. I live on Stafford Road. I'm one of two organizers in opposition to a part of the expansion of what's called the PGE Tonkin Project. This would create an installation of high-voltage power lines from I-205 to Wilsonville on Stafford Road, which is a semi-rural community with a minimum of five acres for each owner. This installation, if it were to come to pass, would create additional easement requirements because these high-powered, 100-foot steel power poles cannot be built within the current right-of-way. And so, there's 51 properties that require easement adjustments. This would necessitate the, excuse me, the removal of about hundreds, if not upwards of 1,000, 30, 40-year-old trees and all the associated vegetation in that area. Most importantly, the real risk here to the community is the fire danger. Stafford Road is currently serviced by one small fire engine. Remote from Stafford Road, closest point being one mile, the furthest being five miles. We already have a number of fires that have started on our road and the, these 100-foot towering poles with 115-kilowatt high-voltage lines would just increase the danger of this. The current rules with the, with the Planning Committee requires a conditional use permit, which we're counting on because three, excuse me, three of the critical areas in attending the planning meeting on Monday, the things that have to be taken into consideration are aesthetics, community involvement, and, and safety. And we've created an organization, we have 100 people, 100-plus homeowners on Stafford Road and close by that have signed our opposition position. We've created a legal organization called Safe Stafford Road with 50 members and we also have 20 of those 50 members that will fight condemnation of our properties if it comes to that. That's not something that the county gets involved with, but we're the county to approve this, then we have to go to the PUC and which will fight it there as well. Coincidental to this is that there's a new, a new planning directive, ZDO 288, which will allow rubber stamping. I understand the resource issue here, but we are really hoping that the board will seriously consider what this would do to our rural road and the damage it would do to a beautiful scenic road. And also, we have children that stand on the road underneath these.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wagner. You do know that there is a March 14th evening hearing set for this exact purpose.
Could you verify the time of that?
It's always at 6:00 P.M.
Your, but your document online says 9:30. So, if it's 6:00 o'clock... Your document online says 9:30, so if it's 6 o'clock-
I don't know what document you're looking at, sir. We post agendas one week before the meetings.
6 o'clock?
6:00 PM, March 14.
In this building?
Right where you're sitting.
Thank you, ma'am.
You betcha. Thank you very much. Any comments on that? Up next, Dominic Keller.
My name is Dominic Keller, and I am a junior at Expendum High School. As a student-
Sir, I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you move the microphone closer?
Sorry.
Oh, there you go.
My name is Dominic Keller, and I am a junior at Expendum High School. As a student in North Clackamas School District, I can say with great confidence that the Wichita Center has been a cornerstone of social services in our district for as long as I can remember. It's nearly always prominently linked in school newsletters. It manages school food drives. It has a food pantry and clothes closet, something of significant importance to our district, especially given that North Clackamas Schools has around 300 students classified as homeless. It also, as mentioned previously, has Ready, Set, Go and Head Start preschools, which are quite helpful, especially for English language learners who, according to the North Clackamas Schools, make up around 17% of the student body. All this to say, it's a great service. While I understand that you have said that you are in communication with North Clackamas Schools, there seems to have been some sort of break in communication, at least from what I've seen. Many of North Clackamas School members are not aware of the fact that the building is planned on being sold, and especially the services, they are seemingly operating under the assumption that this termination of the agreement implies, as the news sort of states, that they will no longer be able to operate from the Wichita Center building. So I just ask that these services continue and conversations continue, and just preferably making it clear the implications of the termination, because that doesn't seem to have been made clear to the services in at least some portions of North Clackamas Schools. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Savas.
Thank you for that, and hopefully today we can at least help clear all that up. Gary, my understanding is there's a joint statement, and I want to thank Pampplin Media for printing that joint statement by the school district and the Parks District. Do you have a copy of that you can read to the audience here? And I want to thank Pampplin again for printing that joint statement.
I will get it for you in the next minute.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyhow, basically, the joint statement was issued last week, and it was printed in the February 23, Friday article, I believe, about that joint statement that we are working together and have been. There's been no interruption in that agreement whatsoever.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Up next, Leslie Robinett. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Leslie Robinett. I live in the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District near Hetty Knotts Park. I've worked in public education for 18 years. Over those years, I have managed a food pantry, a clothes closet, and a school district dental program. Every day, I saw children who need the programs that Wichita Center provides, and really the life-changing difference that they make. I remember the high school girl who showed up asking for help, wearing her sister's shoes, two sizes too small. She needed black shoes and black pants so she could start a job at a movie theater. Her family was burdened with medical debt, and she got the job to help pay their rent. I remember the single dad with three small boys who started coming to the food pantry when his employer abruptly closed the business, leaving him unemployed. They came for groceries every week for two months until he found his new job. I remember the youth soccer coach who unexpectedly became a foster parent to one of her former players who had been living alone on the streets. The sixth-grade boy arrived with nothing. He needed clothes, shoes, a warm jacket, and pajamas. Wichita Services provide a lifeline for children impacted by difficult circumstances, so I'm very grateful you have offered North Clackamas Schools an exclusive opportunity to purchase the property. Please move quickly to negotiate a deal that will allow these children support programs to continue without disruption. The school district is doing amazing work on a very tight budget. Thank you for doing all you can to support that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Sierra Cook. Oh, Gary, you have your line up.
While she's coming up, I can answer the question, Commissioner Savas. This is the statement the staff of the school district and the Parks District agreed to. I'll read it. "The administration staff at the North Clackamas School District and the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District are in discussions regarding the future ownership of the Wichita Building located at 6031 Southeast King Road. Both organizations share a mutual interest in maintaining the programs that have been servicing the community for several years. Updates will be provided when possible. No decisions will be made until both the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and the North Clackamas School District Board are presented with a recommendation and can deliberate in a public meeting."
Thank you, Gary.
Hi.
Go ahead, Sierra.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Sierra Cook. I'm a Gladstone City Councilor, which I mention only to identify myself. I'm only representing myself here today. I'm the owner of Spoke and Word Books in downtown Milwaukee, and most importantly, I'm the parent of two young children, Jonathan, five, and Casey, three. I had some remarks prepared, but, you know, I just wanted to respond to the discussion that's already happened here today. In response to the statements made by Chair Smith and Commissioner Savas that this is a misunderstanding, I think many of us are excited to hear that this, that no decision has been made at this point. But to be fair, you have served these social services with a notice of termination in 180 days. The community doesn't understand why that happened. Of course, the community is concerned. There hasn't been transparency, and a notice of termination has been served. Additionally, there have been no commitments from the Board of Commissioners that services will continue without interruption at Wichita Center. We hear that this is a misunderstanding, but to be frank, this is what happens when there's no transparency and meaningful community engagement. My suggestion for resolving this misunderstanding would be to sell Wichita Center to the school district for an affordable price and quickly. And if the Board of Commissioners has a plan to keep services at Wichita Center open and operational without interruption, I think we would be very excited to hear about that. Until there's a public solution for continuing these essential services, I think you're going to continue to hear concerns from the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your, thank you for your testimony and congratulations on your role on the city council. I have found in my years of being elected, whether it's here at the commission or years prior, that sometimes misinformation can spread faster, and sometimes we can be surprised, blindsided by the information out there, that narrative out there that's not really false. So we really can't control that. Typically, property negotiations by elected bodies or jurisdictions are done in executive session quietly. There's been no disruption in the services, and I really think that the operator of the services, well, clearly, I don't think, it's in the, it's very clear that the operator of the services rendered there is a school district. So if the school district follows through and they're intent to purchase the building, and we follow through with our intent to sell the building, everything's fine. There should be no disruption. So I just think it's really important that we all have responsibility, especially as elected officials, to make sure we're putting out accurate information, and we do our research, and I'm trying my very best to do that. But I cannot control the external activities and information flow out there that is, you know, misunderstood or incorrect. I can't, I can't control that. All we can do is put out good information.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas, nor can any of us. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good morning, everyone. This board and the county staff feels that transparency with the public is a very important thing, but again, these negotiations and discussions on the future of the Wichita School has been done in executive session in accordance with state law, so that makes transparency difficult. I think that many people would agree that the best use of Wichita School is its current use. The idea to, if it were to be discussed to sell to somebody else and the Wichita School had to relocate, that would be an almost impossible feat and a very expensive one. So again, it's current use and services there, I think, is the best, best use. I hope to get this resolved as soon as possible to keep kids in the school and the school that they are familiar with, and maintain those services. But at the same time, it's important that everybody understand that we're in a changing time of budgets, county budgets, and in this case, the North Clackamas County Parks and Recreation District budget. So that's why we need to make changes, and I, I would like to reassure you all, just relax, and I think in the next, oh, the near future, before the end of the school year, we'll get this thing resolved, hopefully. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, Gary, I have a clarification question for you. Okay, so again, as I've been reading this and understanding it, and I feel like I'm in the middle of a game of telephone, you know, you kind of start at one end, and things kind of get changed along the way. So that's the metaphor I'm using for this. And I will say truly, the issue that we deal with here, and you're talking about transparency, I think is a technical one. All property negotiations in this county are done in executive session with the presence of our lawyers and with the other entity, largely because they're contractual. They're, in my mind, Gary, am I correct, that is how they proceed, and that's what we're doing with the North Clackamas School District at this point. There's been confusion, if I'm understanding this right, about the lease. We have not terminated the lease. What we did was the termination of the transition, which to me is a good thing, because then we're saying, well, okay, this use is embedded there, and it's working for the community, so we'd like to see it continue. Where I think the misunderstanding with the lease is, the lease is just scheduled to end on June 30, correct? But that's like part of the agreement from 2018, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we have an agreement from 2018 that there was going to be a transition. People are saying we don't want that transition. We want to keep Wichita the way it is because all these services are embedded in the community, and part of the negotiation to make sure those services are there is to really maintain that, make that happen, but this June 30, we'll be working with the school district, hopefully to keep those services at that location. At least that's what my hope is with that. So I think that's the technical stuff that's been going on in conversations that have been out there, you know, via the telephone. So I just wanted to clarify that, that I, I believe most of us colleagues are really interested in maintaining, I know I am, the embedded services there, largely because one of the big things, too, is that they have childcare there, and we are in the middle, and we have a childcare desert in this county, and so that's something that... So please don't get worried over the technicalities of this. We're working on it. We want to keep services, and I believe that we're moving to keep the services embedded there. We have a building that we have to make sure is safe and secure. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Gary, you got a comment?
You want to comment on that, please?
All right. We're all saying the same things. Let me try it this way. So there's a signed contract, there's a contract and a legal agreement between the school district and the Parks District. The Parks District gave six months' notice, per the contract, to the school district of the intent to end the strategic partnership, which does include what is housed in the Wichita School. No one's been evicted, no one is kicked out. Now is the time for negotiations, discussions between the school district and the Parks District on what are all the possible options going forward. We have four months now to figure that out collectively, and again, there'll be a public meeting where both boards will discuss what those options are. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to another person. Lanille Vander Mullen, please come forward. Welcome. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, board. I'm Lanille Vander Mullen, and I live on Stafford Road, and this is about the PGE Tonquin Project. This project doesn't sound like an urgent one so much as that it's too important for them to alter in any way after five years of planning. Having only sprung this on our Stafford Road residents last summer, it has all the earmarks of a giant private company trying to railroad its plans through without following normal PUC restrictions and requirements. Too much of it sounds convenience-driven. According to their representative, Tina Tippin, PGE can't bury the lines, which is all we really wanted, because it would have required special pipes made overseas, and that would take longer to order and more money to maintain. But if they had budgeted for that five years ago when they started this project, they might have had them by now. Instead, PGE has put their cost-cutting over our livability and land values, nor do they seem to want to jump over the hurdles necessary to put the lines down 205 instead. One of their engineers told me at their only public meeting that they would have needed an FWH permit to do that. So why didn't they apply for one five years ago when they could have done that? PGE's insistence on having a de facto eminent domain makes me think that PGE is racing their project through as planned, only to avoid more red tape and costs. This could devastate me if, it could devastate me if the project devalues my property, and this is often 10% to 40%, according to realtors who know what happens when you build these gigantic towers along the front of people's properties. In addition, the fire and safety factors of our narrow, winding road indicate PGE's indifference to our livability. So I also resent the Clackamas planners telling our organization that they would inform us of any new activities by PGE, but then they didn't. This makes them look like lobbyists for PGE instead of impartial county employees. I urge you to put your county planners in their place and require PGE to follow all PUC rules. Please don't allow big business to commit this lawfare against us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to address, Stephen McCorr, I want you to address, this is not a county project. We are not the PUC in condemning property. We're not erecting poles, and this really isn't what we do here at Clackamas County. Thank you, Lanille. You may stand down. Stephen.
That is all correct, everything you said. It is not a county project.
Regarding the accusation about staff, look, folks, you can come up and you can say your piece, but I think we all take a little bit of pause when a staff member is accused something that probably is not true. Dan Johnson, would you like to address our planning staff on this? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much. I just, for the record, you do a lot. This is not you. And we'll be prepared to prepare and to respond to any questions that come forward, I think, at the March 14 meeting regarding the project. I started with the county 30 years ago, and I was a planner. I have worked with the planning director for 30 years. I know every member of our planning staff very well. They are professional, they are courteous, they are, they provide a solution, empathetic response to anybody who inquires to any proposed development within Clackamas County. They are professional, they work hand-in-hand with county council, they take a neutral position on any application that comes before them, they review that information, and they either will make recommendations based off the quality and the content of that information, or will make recommendations off that information as well. I find them to be of the highest professional degree, and I'm very proud of that group. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, Lanille, for your comments this morning. At this time, the PGE is making an application to a conditional use permit through the county, is that correct? In accordance with existing county code?
Correct. And so just to be clear for the record, and folks may be watching at home, the current code requires that the utility of this nature has to go through a process, a land use process, conditional use process. There may be some latitude for an alteration of an upcoming use or other path forward, but they are in negotiating- but they are in negotiation, not negotiations, that's the wrong word, they are in their due diligence period in talking with staff about what the appropriate processes and paths are to go forward with this through our current land use process, that is correct. They have not applied though, yet, there's been no formal application.
Yes, yes. And that is most likely why planning staff has not had any new information to pass to the Stafford residents, because this hasn't happened yet.
Correct.
And the other thing too, Mr. Johnson, once the conditional use application process is completed in accordance with existing county code, then it goes to hearings officer if needed? If that is contested by the Stafford residents, it would go to the Public Utilities Commission for ultimate decision, correct?
Close. Essentially, the current county code dictates a process in which county staff or planning staff review the materials submitted by the applicant against applicable findings within our ZDO. They then make a recommendation to our independently hired hearings officer, who then will review our information in addition, our recommendation in addition to the information in the file, and they will issue their independent decision on that. If you are pro or against, for or against the application, doesn't matter where you stand, anybody can appeal that decision, that decision goes to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Right, okay. So, is it not correct that at no time will the process come to the Board of Commissioners for approval or disapproval?
Current county code does not allow for the board to act on the conditional use or land use process.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. And finally, if I was a property owner in the Stafford area and I wanted to work to effect the outcome of the project, would it not be in my best interest at this time to work through the association and the attorney they have? By the words, let me rephrase it, Mr. Johnson. At this point in time, the Board of Commissioners has no authority to effect the process. So, if I was a landowner on Stafford Road and was concerned about it, which they are, and I understand why they are, is it not in their best interest to work with the association they formed and their attorney to try to affect the outcome of this project?
In coordination with Portland General Electric, because it is their project.
Yes, yeah, right, okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I just, I certainly have a sense of what the complexity is here and why there's some misunderstandings and, but there is validity to the concern, and the concern is that these transmission lines going through that area will effectively become really a, you know, a little bit unsightly, going from 20-foot power lines to 80-foot poles or towers or whatnot is not going to look very pretty to an area that is, you know, well-revered by the local residents. And I think they interpreted the discussion about staffs discussing the complexities of land, of the land use aspects of this, conditional use versus not, right-of-way typically, has been interpreted as, as making it easier for the applicant, in this, this case, to proceed with this, with their improvements. However, we've been informed that regardless of our staff's efforts to streamline the process, PGE is still subject to the conditional use and is moving forward under that conditional use. So, it is going to be just as difficult or easy, or however you want to interpret it, there's been no change in the process that, but it's been interpreted as such. So, you know, it'd be, you know, I, I look at that transmission line or conveyance for interstate use or whatnot, whether it's power or it's putting a freeway through there, there's no freeway going through there, but if it's a natural gas line, 24 inches that feeds the state of Oregon and the state of Washington or something like that, that's, that's a big deal going through a community. So, it's got risks associated with it, and I think this is viewed as a community, not as a corridor for utilities that serve other states. And I think that's what's, that's what's probably a little bit bothersome for a lot of people. I think staff are doing a great job, I have, unfortunately, this is reflected on staff, and that's not really fair, but I can see how they interpret it that way. So, thanks, Dan.
And because of that, Commissioner Savas, is why I agreed, talking to the Save Stafford Group, to be a convener at a public meeting, at which time folks from Stafford can come forward and express their concerns in their three minutes that's allowed. We will have staff from PGE in the room, and we will have your planning staff in the room to answer process questions going forward with this. I look forward to it, I've scheduled it a long time ago, after talking to you folks. Just because you don't see it online when you think it should be online, is not exactly the county's process. I have made that promise a month ago, and I'm continuing that process. But don't expect a decision from the Board of County Commissioners, because we have no decision-making authority in this. Just want to make that very clear. Mr. Scholl.
Yes, I would like to clarify one more point that's come up in questions from constituents. And that has to do with the current county code and the conditional use application process that we've, we've discussed, that potentially is going to come up to the Board for discussion in June, I think it is, to look at the current requirements for conditional code applications that might be changed later on in a code update. But right now, the, the Tonquin Project is subject to the current code, okay? So, I, I hope that clarifies this question about the change, the potential change to the county code in the future.
And I also want to highlight, because you brought it up, the discussion around the proposed amendment. The proposed amendment is not just solely around the Tonquin Project, it's around all utilities.
Right, exactly.
We're talking utilities above ground, we're talking utilities below ground, we're talking about feeder line, all the nuances of associated with utilities. It's a new interpretation, our code was challenged, we worked with county council to look at it. We agreed with the, with the new interpretation, but there's just a discussion that has to be held with the community and our board regarding what are vital utilities that we think need to go through a public process versus some that may not.
Yeah, okay, good. Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you, Dan Johnson, and we will move on. Up next is Christine Kennedy. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Very good, thank you. My name's Christine Kennedy, I live in Oswego, I've lived there for about 10 years. And I'm here today because of the conversation about the Wichita Center and specifically the issues around misinformation. We're all at risk for that. What I'm concerned about is that it feels, it feels to me that the communication has just not been very effective for anybody. So, if the intent of this group is to support the continuation of the Wichita Center in its current situation, sell the building, whatever you're talking about, you've got your process, you're privileged, you know a lot of stuff that the rest of us don't know, and you try to your best to make that information public, and I know that. So, one of the thoughts, one of the ideas, one of the things that comes to my mind is the term equity. I have adult children who are actually looking for a home right now, my son and his partner, and they're looking all over for a home. So, I look at this issue from my perspective. Clackamas County is not growing. Your numbers aren't growing. What can we do to become a more welcoming county? The term equity comes to mind because that's exactly what the Wichita Center is doing. They're a neighborhood-powered, neighborhood-centered place. And for those kids who have to go to school and don't have a nice pair of shoes, it's equity when they get a nice pair of shoes. That's almost the definition, because they don't look like the other. They don't look like the person who lives out of their home anymore. I had the wonderful privilege of going to the Jennings Lodge Park Open House yesterday afternoon, and what a positive experience that was. Oh, my gosh. The families, the kids, the diversity, the feeling of inclusion, the feeling that people were being asked to make decisions, give their input, they're not making their decisions, they're giving input. Input is important. So, I just would encourage you to think about the privilege that you have in terms of your communication and what you're doing, the complexity of it, the budgeting. You're, I've done budgets for years, multimillion-dollar budgets. I've been forced to make 5% cuts when I didn't want to. I've, I've cut staffing to the bone, but I was able to justify it because I felt like we had the right processes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
You bet. Up next, Story Long. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Story Long. I'm a pastor and organizer with Storyline Community and with Oak Grove United Methodist Church in Clackamas County. I work with many churches who are connected to the Wichita Center, because when teachers and counselors talk to a student or a family that needs help paying bills or who are in need of rental assistance so they don't become evicted, Wichita Center is often the first line of defense for those folks. Furthermore, if the families don't qualify for county resources or they can't access them in time, Wichita Center reaches out to us and says, can you help us bridge this gap to keep these families housed and keep the lights on? The relationship between the faith communities and Wichita Center have been essential for many folks in our community who are right on the edge. The families who are working several jobs to pay rent and who don't have enough food or clothes, so they go to the Wichita Center to access their pantries. The families served there are our neighbors, and as Commissioner Sawis reflected, they're your neighbors. The center serves 250 families weekly who rely on the ease and accessibility of the services there, which is impacted directly by the location, by the fact that the building holds all of these services, by the fact that it's on a bus line, is what has made it so successful. Those services help families stay housed, they help kids stay fed, they help them feel confident enough to go to school, all of which, aside from being the signs of a compassionate community, also serve a bottom line. We know that services like this reduce overall burden of cost caused by absenteeism, high dropout rates, unstable housing, and the mental, physical, and emotional trauma of a family unit being disconnected from their community. And I understand, I hear you, that no decision's been made, you've come to the table, I understand that the details are not public, we don't need all of the intricate details of those conversations, that's not even what most of us are asking for. I probably wouldn't understand a lot of it. But I suspect, as I've heard, some of you have been like, well, hold on, cool your jets, we haven't made a decision yet, why are we so worked up? But in the past, when many of the same voters and taxpayers in this room reflected our concerns over something, say the dissolution of the DEI, I believe it was Commissioner Scholl, unless they misquoted you, and the Washington Free Breton, kind of brushed us off as nothing more than a progressive left political pressure from a minority with a loud mouth. So, you can understand how we're hesitant to hold our hands up and trust the process when that's what many of us have been called before. So, please take our concerns seriously now when we say the Wichita Center is not expendable. I do know you've come to the table, I do want to affirm that, I'm not here just to, just to scold you, I affirm that and hope those, those conversations continue with a lens from the board that doesn't take just the immediate cost benefit, but also the human cost and the dollar perspective that comes when these resources are lost, and it's high. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl, you have your light on.
Yes. I just want to say, ladies and gentlemen, it's very important to not confuse this issue about the Wichita School. We have a lot of work to do, we need to stay, stay on the facts on this, to put it together. The issue about EID does not enter into decision-making on the board for the Wichita School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more blue card left, and as for anyone else in the room who would like to testify and submit a blue card, I believe Tony might have one or two people online. Up next, Mitzi Bauer. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, county commissioners, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mitzi Bauer, I live in Happy Valley, and I've been a resident of the county for 42 years, and I'm now a volunteer board member. I was heartened to hear the joint statement that we had last week, that your board is as committed as North Clackamas School District is to the essential social services at Wichita Center, and for that to continue uninterrupted, and I heard that today, and I want to, I'm heartened more from what I'm hearing you say, that you're acknowledging these services are so important to our whole county. We want kids to graduate, we want them to be successful, and these, these programs are just so important. You've heard about the level of 39% that are low-income. Backpack Buddies is a program that people are not talking about, Food Goes Home, about 1,000 to students every weekend. This is a real need, and you agree, I hear you saying, cannot turn our backs. We don't want to be the legacy together that closes Wichita Center, no one, our district, your board. I think we can agree on that, too. The confusion on transition, termination of the transition or slash lease, I can tell you, as a person, hearing about that, that it was interpreted as, and there was a date, that we made backup plans, okay? As we need to be responsible, as a school district and as board member, that we have plans for what we need to do, and things were moving very slow, and we only have four months. So, again, I'm heartened to hear that you are moving forward and you're committed to these services, but as you spoke, you know, you need to do your executive session, you need to do transparency, we need to do that also. So, we need to get this moving. Please, you know, make a, make a commitment to offer to the districts, something that is affordable. And I'll remind you, you've heard, 2020, the county sold the 78 Parrot Creek property in Oregon City to use serving nonprofit for a dollar, given the aging buildings and the need for uninterrupted vital services. So, I'm looking forward to getting this done, working together, and, and having this uninterrupted and at affordable price. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am at the 11:30 hour, I'm going to hand the gavel over to Commissioner Schrader, who is our vice chair. Commissioner Savas, your light is on, and if you would also to address the Parrot Creek situation, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison at all, would you care to address that?
Well, yeah, a little bit, I mean, I don't know what...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say that the other confusion here is that the, and I, I can see how it easily can happen, so I'm not being critical of anyone here. But the Board of County Commissioners, is the Board of County Commissioners, we wear several hats, the other hat we wear in this case is the NCPRV Board of Directors. The, so, the Parrot Creek situation is quite unique, we are as engaged, you know, with support for that as we had in the past prior to the change. But the Board, the Board of Directors for the county commission has a different set of books, a different set of financial circumstances, different aspects of this that are not the same for the, for the financial condition of the NCPRD, and the agreement between the district, the two districts. So, the, unfortunately, it's not, it's not a secret, certainly in the budget document that was reviewed here in May 22nd of last year, in that document, you'll read in there that expenses are exceeding revenues, they're in poor condition, the district is not in good shape. The district acquired it for a trade of $1.37 million for that property. And so, the ability to, to gift property or anything else is, again, our job is to be, work in the best interest of the Parks District and recognize its financial circumstance, which is completely different than the financial position of the county and the services rendered therefore. So, again, the point I'm trying to make here is that... So again, the point I'm trying to make here is that the Parks District is one responsibility we have in one jurisdiction, and the county is another jurisdiction. So even though we might be the same people, the circumstances are completely unique, and the responsibilities with that by state law are completely unique. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. So I don't see any more blue cards up here. So Tony, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
I will begin with Emily Lowry. Ms. Lowry, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Absolutely. Hello, my name is Emily Lowry. I'm a resident of Milwaukee. I'm here today, like so many others, to celebrate the Wichita Center and acknowledge and reiterate the significance of the space and its resources. The importance of the Wichita Center is not up for debate, of course. The Wichita Center is unique in its comprehensive centralized offerings, coupled tightly with the accessibility of the location. It's essential to the families and community of Clackamas County, but you know that. It's a vital and beloved part of the soul and fabric of our community and our county. You also know that supporting families and children in need and intervening early reduces poverty, reduces hunger, reduces homelessness and addiction, improving health, education, and success measures for our community members, which are all key priorities to our Board of County Commissioners. What you can see today is that I, like so many other county members represented here, are passionate in supporting our neighbors, our friends, and above all, the Wichita Center. I know timelines are short. Four months is not a long time with the amount of work that needs to be done on all sides. So in the strongest of terms, I, like many others, are cheering you on, cheering on the Board of the NCPRD, the Board of County Commissioners, and of course, the school district, to continue to prioritize the Wichita Center, swiftly resolving any lagging confusion, miscommunication, and above all, avoid any disruptions to the vital and indispensable services offered by the Wichita Center. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Tony, anyone else?
Next on the list, Sarah Wilkinson. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wilkinson. I am in the Cecil-Bellin neighborhood of Milwaukee. At the same time that the Wichita Center termination, we're not calling it a termination as of today, the transition happened, you also terminated the lease, or North Clackamas Park, terminated the lease on the old Clackamas Elementary that housed the Cassian Heights Public Charter School. So I think that's where maybe the communication breakdown is happening, is you did terminate the lease on a facility that is housed in the old Clackamas Elementary School. That school has a plan and will be moving, but that does come at a huge expense. So maybe that's where the communication error has come, and the miscommunication that's happened is because these two things happened at the same time. So I just want to share that and continue to support Wichita Center and hopefully sell to North Clackamas School Districts.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Tony, anyone else?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Vice Chair, do not have any hands raised.
All right. This seems to be the end of the list. Before we move on to the next piece of our agenda, is there anyone else in the audience who hasn't come forward that would like to say something? Seeing none, Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, Vice Chair Schrader. Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to share the good work of our county employees during my update. Today, I'd like to recognize our libraries in Clackamas County, or LINK, L-I-N-C-C, staff. They are county employees that provide that service on behalf of the Library District of Clackamas County. We received a really nice note from a member of the public who wrote, "I live alone and have been chair-bound since before the pandemic. Rheumatoid arthritis means I cannot hold a regular book, and my knees will no longer allow me to move around in my apartment. I've always loved reading, and now it's in my solace and my escape. After my caregivers leave around 1:00 p.m. daily, I start reading, usually until I lay back and go to sleep at night. The eBooks and audiobooks provided through the LINK system help so many people like me. They are literally a lifeline for so many of us." Absolutely true. So thank you for that note from a member of our public and to our county staff who help operate the libraries in Clackamas County network. Next, not many members of the public know this, but I want to reiterate and thank those that did know. Thanks to our work of Public and Government Affairs, our Assessment and Taxation Staff have a property tax program that offers relief to property owners who experience a loss due to force majeure, a legal term which means an act of God, things that we cannot control. And during our ice storm, that was considered, of course, an act of God. So to date, 40 Clackamas County property owners are receiving a reduction in their property taxes for this year due to damage from the ice storm. So if the public is not knowing about this, please contact our Assessment and Taxation Staff, who will work with you on what the terms are to help support you if needed. In particular, thanks to the staff of our Assessment and Taxation Office, John Benet, who has spearheaded this outreach to the public to offer members of the public this assistance. So that is my update on good news of our staff this week. Thank you, Commissioners. Back to you, Vice Chair Schrader.
Thanks so much, Gary. Well, gentlemen, it's you and I, and Commissioner Communication and Commissioner Scholl. You are up first, sir.
Yes, well, thank you and good morning, Clackamas County. And I'd like to thank everybody for attending our meeting today. It's been very informative. We appreciate your involvement. I'd like to mention a few things on the Sunrise Corridor. As you may know, we are conducting a study on Phase Two of the Sunrise Corridor from 1/22 to 1/72. On Monday night, there was outreach in Happy Valley. It was well-attended, and for those of you who attended to ask questions, I really appreciate it. If you go to our county website under the Sunrise Corridor Community Visioning Project, you'll see a video that'll tell you all about Phase Two of the Sunrise Corridor. You can take a survey to make your ideas on what that Phase Two should look like, make your ideas known. And again, thank you very much for your involvement on Monday night. On fire prevention, I'd like to do a shout-out to the Mount Hood Corridor Wildfire Partnership along Highway 26 that's working very hard to reduce fuel loads, to mitigate potential fire in that area. If you have land or a home that needs to be looked at for fuel reduction, this is the time to do it, and your local fire department can be very helpful in identifying what needs to be done to decrease the potential fire around your property, or you can contact the Mount Hood Corridor Wildfire Partnership. And also a shout-out to Ant Farm and Sandy for all your work for reducing fuel loads in Clackamas County. I'd like to remind people that this year, the elections are very important, May 21, and of course, the general election in November. Please go to our Clerk's website, see the link, to make sure that your voter registration is current. And Vice Chair Schrader, that's what I have for you this morning.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I want to thank everyone who showed up here today and all the other folks that have contacted me. I spent the weekend talking to a lot of people in our community about the Wichita Center and all the services. Again, when it first opened up, I believe there was an open house, I think it was, was the event that I attended there. And again, I always leave that facility and other facilities that serve people that are impoverished or struggling. It tugs on the heartstrings and fill a tremendous amount of empathy with those folks. I grew up poor myself, and I would probably say, even though I grew up poor, I probably grew up luckier than most, even in that poor situation. I remember going to bed starving to death many nights, not starving to death, but starving, hungry. But, you know, I know that people have it a lot worse off than I ever did. So I feel lucky that I grew up as I did compared to some other people that were far less fortunate and struggling. You know, my learned lesson, I'll just share with some of the people in the room, that I kind of expressed, is that, you know, when I went to school, you know, between libraries and my teachers and learning civics and everything, I learned a lot, and I took that to heart. And that was, do your homework, do your research. Whether I was doing a debate or whatnot, we went to City Hall in the little town that I lived in, trying to understand how public processes worked, you know, wrote to other cities and chambers of commerce as a school exercise. But if I learned anything, it was about, do your homework, do your research. And when I first got involved in public stuff here 25-some-odd years ago, I was nudged to look into something and advocate for something that I really didn't know much about. So as opposed to just kind of jumping in, just jumping in the water in the deep end, I spent several weeks actually reading, researching, looking at documents before I said anything. And I really feel that that's really a responsible thing to do for the community. I didn't want to stir the pot any more than it was. I didn't want to aggravate things without a full understanding, and I think that's something that I've carried through in my career. In my business life, I had to deal with very complex mechanical kind of things, and most people aren't going to understand it, I get that, but I have always had to learn how to distill that down into, you know, facts, and in a way that people could understand, you know, what it might be that they don't understand and how to get them through the particular problem they have. But the communication is important, but I think working in good faith and good understanding and trusting one another is extremely valuable, and I think that no problem that I've ever experienced with two parties working in good faith cannot be solved. And I think if that, my message is that in January, or my message in February, or every time since this has all bubbled up, and that if we work in good faith, we will solve all the problems that are before us. The last thing I'll say about property negotiations, I'll look to our attorney as well, we deal in lots of property transactions, right-of-way issues all the time. Public doesn't know it, it's not a big issue, but when that decision's made, it's made in public. Whether it's a consent agenda item or a work session, those are all done publicly. Once we've ironed out all the details, once we understand it. But the amount of work and the research that myself and my colleagues do, which is a full-time job, I mean, hours and hours of work and research that we do on these topics, and we don't expect our volunteers, we don't expect the public to be able to follow that or understand that. We're not critical of that. I want to make sure that I'm not critical of anyone here today, but we do have a responsibility to just clarify things that have occurred. So I appreciate everyone's passion about this, and we share that passion, and we'll look forward to getting this settled soon. That's all I have for today, Chair. Vice Chair? Vice Chair Schrader?
Vice Chair? Is that my title today? Some days I forget. I'm just Martha most of the time, guys. In any case, I want to thank all of you for coming here today. I think this has been a fruitful discussion. Just to recap, for the public record, the services at Wichita include the food pantry, closed closet, that's open to students at North Clackamas School District schools, hygiene supplies, homeless liaison, McKinney-Vento Act services for homeless students, dental services, preschool kindergarten readiness program for children and parents in partnership with the Metropolitan Family Services, after-school programs, summer programs, one of them in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and that is operated by our school district, operated by the Oregon Department of Human Services, family coach, which helps people connect with benefits and services. And finally, the pieces that are operated by Clackamas County includes Women, Infants, and Children WIC, behavioral health, operated by Clackamas County Children's Commission, which is its own nonprofit, is Head Start. And then we have the presence of the North Clackamas Education Foundation and field and facility rentals. I think that the program's been going on for a very, very long time. I don't think the sense I'm getting from my colleagues and from members of the audience that no one wants to see these embedded services in a centralized location to go away, okay? We all, I think, are in agreement with that, and the location is good, and particularly there are things that we do here that actually fill a significant need in this county, particularly childcare, early childhood education, and those kinds of services, which largely, in this county, quite frankly, we have deserts. And we are continuing to work with our Workforce Board to increase childcare capacity. That's another issue. But what I want to say is that the emotional issues of knowing that these are embedded and that people want to keep them and that we want them there is the easy part. It's the technical piece of how we negotiate contractually that always gets things sticky, okay? And that's what we're doing. I think there is a commitment to maintain these services. I think we will operate in good faith with the North Clackamas School District. I've been familiar with everyone in the North Clackamas School District for years, and I believe that they are also operating in good faith to make sure that as we work through for the next four months how we're going to transition and how we're going to keep these services, that they will operate in good faith with us to make this happen. So I want to thank you for all of that, and that's just a little bit of letting the public know what is in that building and why it's so important. I just want to end by saying that one of the things I've been doing, besides working on this issue with my colleagues, is I have been visiting our business recovery centers across the county, which are based in our local chambers of commerce. And the reason I am visiting them is the data shows that because of COVID, wildfires, heat domes, ice storms, our businesses were hurting. The business recovery centers were an essential piece of bridging the difficulties our smaller to medium-sized businesses were having during all those disasters to stay open. They have loved having those initiated by the county, and I'll be finishing up my visits. I've been to Wilsonville, I've been to Sandy, I have yet to go to Canby, and all the other chambers that I'll be talking to. But the feedback I'm getting is that it's been a great program, and so I have committed at least to take a look at some federal dollars that might be available to keep that kind of a program going for our chambers of commerce, because the small business community is the backbone of our communities, I believe. Well, with that, colleagues, I think that we are done for the day, and once again, thank all of you for coming today. We appreciate your input, and you'll be hearing from us. Okay? Thanks.[1780.36][1780.36][music]